Yeah, I got a bunch of stuff going on tonight. Yeah, I'll call this work session to order. I'm gonna turn it over to Jason.
Right. Well, thank you so much for meeting with us extra. Uh, wanting to talk about the things we brought up in City Council, uh, two weeks ago. Yeah. So, um, there are three main issues and, uh, the easiest one to talk about, I, I'd like to go in kind of opposite order. Start with the easiest one because I think we can make decisions on these easier ones faster. And then, of course, the, the intersection issue go last. So I think there's gonna be a lot more discussion. There are so many ways we could address that and this group could have a lot of really good input on that. So. The first one is just from the speed monitoring data. Uh, what we did is we highlighted a number of areas where, um, let's see, I can do the Dropbox.
If you go down by the time thing.
Oh, okay.
And you just click on that. And then you go up to the folder and then your things should already be down.
Perfect. Perfect. Okay. So it was under City Council. And it was. Oh, I didn't, I found it in this one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, from last week, so.
Not that, but you.
Your last one?
This is that box you got speeding in?
That's awesome.
Yeah, where? Hold on, let me go check. I've got them all pulled up on mine. August 21. Okay, yeah, so. So there's that one and. Let's see here. That's one. And then if we go to. Safety report. There we go. That's the other one.
Not that I want to sit by it, I just couldn't see.
Um, so on here, the three. It's like already scrolled down. Perfect. Uh, okay, so the three issues. One is the data-driven sheriff monitoring request. And that is that we have five signs that collect data, collect and report data. They're on three different roads though, uh, which I think brings up another question we can talk about later, but the, the main thing together from this is, we were able to gather patterns of days and times when we would see the most, uh, likely chances of, uh, sheriff monitoring being effective, where it would be less of a waste of their time. So that's one thing. That's probably the easiest thing to talk about. Say, hey, by the way, these are the times that we found on these three roads that you would be most likely to, to catch, uh, aggressive speeders and, that got broken down into three categories. The main one, I think if we were to start with, would be, um, people who are in the worst speeding category, which is twenty miles an hour or over in some of these places. Um, and so if we were primarily to focus on that, that goes well above their nine-year fine, ten-year mine. And so the, the peak times for, for that on North Plain City Road are between fifteen hundred and eighteen hundred on weekdays. And then there's this little time period right before midnight. People gotta get home from the ball apparently and, uh, and so.
I like that.
So anyway, that one on Plain City Road and then, uh, twenty-five seventy-five where we got one sign reporting, daily from, uh, from five to six. No surprise there. And then on nineteen hundred, this one actually, while it did have a number of, uh, problem cars, its eighty-fifth percentile actually lined up pretty close with its posted speed sign. And so this one probably would be the lowest priority, but they did have, uh, they did have higher issues around like four to six in the morning, if I remember right. Um, it's, it's in this report, but so if they wanted to focus on that, they could. But based on where we've got our signs, these other two at those two days and times, uh, where they would be most likely to find the worst offenders, speeders.
Two hundred and twenty-one extreme speeding. In how many days of data is this?
That's approximately a month. The signs won't let me get an exact month. It's broken down by weeks on the reports I was generating.
You know, when you think of it, even if it is roughly thirty days, you know, that's quite a few every day.
Right. Um, and so, you know, if, if you were to, um, the main thing that was, was a big deal for both North Plain City Road and twenty-five seventy-five is if you were to get rid of the twenty mile an hour or over speeds on the, the records for that month, it would actually bring in line the eighty-fifth percentile for those roads and their posted speeds. And so that by itself would be a huge victory. That means we'd still like basically not be monitoring or worrying about the ten mile an hour, which is still too fast on, on those roads, in my opinion. But just getting rid of those, that higher speed group on both those roads brings the eighty-fifth percentile down to the engineered, uh, speed limit that's posted. So that would be a pretty big win. And obviously monitoring is the first thing we can do, but we can also use that data to say, hey, let's prioritize other, uh, passive approaches to decreasing speed on these roads, or at least getting speed closer to the intended. Anyway, so that's the main thing. And I don't know what this body wants to do as far as recommending, uh, to our, uh, our Sheriff's Department, how and when they monitor. That part I'm not familiar with.
I, I think we could ask, using this data, I think we just talked to Lieutenant Horton and go, you know, talk to Courtwright and go, hey, this is when the fish are biting.
Yeah, well, they couldn't do it every day for an extended period, but they could pull the support as they will.
I think you do it one day a week on a different day.
A couple of days, yeah.
You know, the idea would start sinking that they're watching this. You don't know when.
Yep. And, and especially if we're really targeting that, the higher speeds, um, then.
Couple, a couple of nights with flashy lights and somebody on the side of the road does a lot.
They start learning everybody else.
Yeah, yeah. So, and that, that's fine. I, my personal opinion is I'd love to not have my neighbors getting speeding tickets. But I think for some people that might be the only recourse.
Right. If they've, if they've learned it, they've earned it.
Right. I, I'm just.
No matter how good a neighbors they are.
That's where, that's where I think, uh, using the same data to then also make plans for passive, uh, approaches long-term is probably better. So, um, so anyway, that's the easiest topic of everything is, hey, this is the data, these are the dates, these are the times.
And, and so these are some of the signs. Uh, we now have two more signs.
And I haven't looked to see those yet. Do they report data into that same system?
That I'm not sure of. It's for the ones for the, um, school zone that we have on North Plain City Road.
And then did we end up moving that one that was there?
So I, I don't know if it's moved yet, but I actually had an idea while I was standing there and I was talking to Dave Anderson about it. And I go, you know how we were looking at getting one on a trailer? I'm like, can we put that on a trailer? When we have.
It's solar powered, right?
Yeah. So the battery is good. The only thing they'll have to do is find an axle and a frame to, to be able to fold around with. And Dave's already got a, a path forward. He said, let's just let things like sewer and things.
What kind of work do you need? I mean, I might have access to some small, like eight hundred to a thousand pound axle trailers.
Yeah. The ones I see around, like when I'm going out to Kent and I take one of those, those new cut-through roads and, uh, Plain City has one there all the time and it's probably the size of the podium. Maybe a little bit bigger.
Yeah, I think, I think he's got it in the works.
Make anything over there.
Dave's already working towards it and it doesn't have to be big axle car tires because we're not towing it on the freeway.
Yep.
It just has to be able to do thirty miles an hour.
I've seen some, I've looked because on my Facebook, when I look at these things, all of a sudden they come popping up on my thing. They have some that look like they're attached to a hand truck.
Yeah.
So it could, it could be that simple, but you wouldn't want it because I'm not walking around with that thing.
Also, we don't want them to like run off.
Raise your move from on street to the next.
City Works building, just waiting for time to repurpose it so that the other two are downloadable.
And that's, um, yeah, that, that, that would be fantastic if we got that because that would be a trailer solution that, you know.
Yeah, we were thinking about getting one. Maybe we have one.
And I got a, a text and a phone call last week. What do you want to do? What do you want to do? Now I'm going to wait until they call me back and say, you're in following pattern. We're not buying one. We're going to MacGyver something. If that doesn't work, then we'll get in touch with you again.
That's your cost. Pay a lot and we'll reconsider.
Okay, great.
Who wants to reach out to the sheriffs? Like as an action item?
No, I think they would, I think they'd be here this evening.
Yeah. Horton's really good about, I can usually reach out to him and he's usually right on, you know, by asking, hey, we need some extra patrols on a certain street. He'll let traffic. People know, you know, with the caveat, of course, if they got, you know, they have to go out west to the races. That's where they're gonna go.
Right. So the next item, uh, to cover is this one that section three, Development Code Safety Standards Initiative. Mainly the thing here is especially, um, with what we're doing with general plan, uh, realignment, we've got a, a committee focused on the traffic, roads and active transportation. So there's gonna be at least discussions around this at a general plan level. Obviously, general plan means we're not gonna be putting anything prescriptive, but, uh, this initiative I'm bringing up is since we still have areas being developed and still some land that future could be developed, it would be nice to have on the book something where we can say, as part of your plan, we identified these areas that need to, to, uh, be addressed. And I don't think that should be, uh, subjective. That should come with standards of like, if a road meets these standards, then these types of solutions ought to be considered for use. And I, I don't, like, again, I don't want tonight to be a, a deciding on what those are. I think it really needs to be a toolkit of options based on, uh, a number of identified scenarios.
You do know that we do have an item on our regular agenda to consider. We can take action on some of these. If that's what you'd like us to do.
Yes.
We could do that tonight.
So it's very simple. It says consideration of traffic, traffic committee recommendations for increased traffic safety. So if that's something, you know, you would like us to address tonight, we can.
Okay. So then that would be, that would be one for sure, would be to have, uh, probably the traffic committee work in tandem with Planning Commission to figure out what those scenarios are and then what the, what the city would like to see as, possible outcomes. And it probably want to have that be something along the lines of, um, these scenario, these types of, uh, tools or similar. So that we're not.
So do we want that in, after last night's conversation? Do we want that in a code or a resolution?
I think you want to make it code.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
You want it, you want it in your general plan, but then I think you also want it in your code.
Something with teeth in it to make sure.
The, the, the general plan gives you the, the guidance to where you want to go. The code is what you follow. And the code needs to match with the general plan's guiding you to.
We, we, uh, we had a really lucky scenario with Legends where they gave us bulbous at the north end of their main road. But we didn't have any teeth behind it. That was just a, please, please do this.
We did get lucky and it'll be like, we'll get some people that come before us that are like, you know, if there's not, it'll be like that property over there behind the Amazon. They're like, oh, we'll give you open space, but it's private. We, nobody else can use it. And it's little pieces of open space, not any space that's usable. So.
It's little corners that can't be used, so we'll call those good.
So we need to have, I mean, I know we don't like to be prescriptive, but we do need to be able to have some specificity.
I agree. So, um, that would be the purpose of that initiative. And it would, like I said, be probably in tandem between the traffic committee and Planning Commission. Then the Planning Commission would bring the recommendation City Council for, for code. Okay.
Do you, and do you see yourself needing any, um, like, uh, traffic expertise in this or, you know, some, um, you know, money for, you know, somebody that's a traffic engine, engineer to look at this and say, yes, this is gonna work. No, it's not.
Um, I think we would be better off if we had something like that because while we can look up what other cities have done, what other, other standards are across the state and even country, it would, it would be nice to have somebody who is a, an expert who can say, yeah, that is a good idea and here's why.
And look at our situation.
Right. Applying those standards to our.
Yeah. How does that fit us? Does, you know, we can look at other cities, but it doesn't always fit us. There's so many things that that's true of.
This consultant or consulting firm to, as far as doing traffic studies, where would we go first?
Um, I probably, we want to get the plan together, at least the general plan, uh, language there so we can at least say, this is the direction we're trying to go as a city. And then say, these are the known scenarios we have and we'd like to codify something that says, new developments have to deal with these kinds of issues.
Yeah. And also with the meeting we went to, was it this last evening? Everything goes by so fast.
West Haven. It was last night.
Yeah, last night. Right. It's, it's been a long week. Um, because they were very much, you know, whatever you need, talk to the league or, uh, WFRC, they have resources to help with these kinds of.
More than once, they said, call us, we'll help you.
And that's, and it's that time to, and that's what I was thinking, those kind of pots of funding that we were looking at. Those ones that are like, I think, like the carbon reduction or those ones that don't necessarily apply for normal road projects. This may be a good use for applying for some of that funding for.
Okay.
And we have our LAA, Madison Avellis. She's basically, I'll call her kind of staff, but not really. She's our, uh, not city manager, city manager. You met her.
Yes. She's, uh, significant liaison between municipalities like us and.
And she knows, she knows all of the people that we need to reach out to, uh,
Yesterday, she offered to help put together our letters, a letter of intent for the land use connection funding and then our, help with our application and stuff. So.
She's, she's a resource for sure.
I've still got to schedule that meeting with WFRC, but I'll try to get that in before we, our next active transportation meeting.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, they said they can help us. We're gonna, we'll raise our hand and go, we'll take it. A lot of that was about, you know, the last night's meeting was about, okay, here's resources. We have resources available. You know, what do you need?
They wanted to hear what our concerns were and when they realized that.
Well, and then looking at the timeline of those, it's kind of like, you apply and then WFRC helps you go through the procurement process and then, um, award it to, you know, a consultant and then, so it takes some time to get that money and get that ball rolling. And so I think that gives us a good start as a internal organization to put together some of those. Here's what we're thinking. Here's a general direction we're going and then we can hand that off to them and they can hit the ground running.
Really good about that stuff.
Fantastic. All right. So that's two out of three. Only, only a few minutes in already. This one's the bigger one.
Speak slower. Well, I didn't know how much time we needed and I didn't want to be rushed.
No, no, I appreciate that. I, I don't mind hanging out with you guys.
I was just thinking, this is potentially, uh, well, it will be, this will be next year's council.
There you go.
You're gonna address me as a senior council member?
To do what? You want to, you want to be the, the mayor?
I'll be the one here the longest.
You will be.
The alternate to the mayor? You throw, better, better get some more signs.
They're called. I put over things I cover up.
That makes sense. Okay. So this last issue, and it's possible this will take up the whole remainder of the time because I think there are so many different ways we can address this. But, um, two, two aspects. Number one, twenty-five seventy-five gets a lot of complaints for a couple of reasons. One, I don't want to focus on tonight and that's the speed. Uh, people complain about speeding, but I think we've already kind of addressed one way we can deal with that. Just with the, the focused monitoring by the Sheriff's Office.
Focus to enforcement.
And so, um, that's not really the point of this, this topic. This topic is specific to, oh, I need to.
But actually, yeah, they're, they're almost two separate issues on the same road because the speed becomes an issue once you get out of that, you know, get on that straightaway.
Yeah, and it, um.
Yeah, but if you've got limited sight distance and you're going too fast.
It does.
You have no reaction window. There's no place to compensate.
I think the speeding issues are more prominent through that, once you get through the areas with the limited sight distance.
Yeah, I, I think so too.
It also depends on who you talk to.
That's fair. So anyway, I, I wanted to bring that up first just because I don't want to get sidetracked on the speeding issue.
Yeah, that's fine.
I think we want to talk about that as a separate issue, probably in a separate meeting, especially after we see the targeted monitoring and enforcement because that will, that will have an impact, right? But the main thing, so if, I, I think you're, everybody's here, everybody hears where, where we're talking about. So north of twenty-seven hundred, uh, as you go through Far West Farms, no, no, that's not Far West Farms. What do they call that? I can't remember.
It's a meadows.
It's a meadows. Uh, it's one of them.
It's Far West Meadows. There's Mia Meadows on the other side. This is Far West Meadows. Then it gets into.
Okay.
The Meadows Park.
That's why we called it that.
Okay. And then, then we got up into Hart up here. So twenty-nine twenty-five is the, the one where, uh, we're talking about the most drastic changes being possible. And that, uh, that's probably where the worst visibility issues are, is when you, especially if you're coming from this, uh, west half of this loop up to this intersection here, um, trying to cross it or, uh, go left from here is probably the worst scenario.
Looking to the right of you.
You don't know.
It's bent around and there may be a trailer or a vehicle blocking.
Right.
Four-way stop there.
No, there's not. And that is one of the possible outcomes. I even used to advocate for something like that here, but I think that there might be better options that would be effective for dealing with this. Again, lots of different options. But, uh, so this is one intersection. There's a similar one here. Similar issue here, although I don't think it's as big of an issue because it's really only in one direction, whereas this intersection, you've got blind, or I shouldn't say blind spots, but limited visibility both directions. This one, though, there's a lot of pedestrian traffic, especially since we've got the mailboxes right over here.
And the knot park.
And the knot park. And so I think we probably also want to look at addressing the visibility here as well. But I think this is the higher priority intersection.
Because I know we've gotten requests for both of those intersections that have four-way stops. And it's like, not both of them.
No.
And then not for, just for speeding. So I appreciate this.
Right. And then, and the selfish side of me is like, if we did do a four-way stop here, what we know about those is by the time cars get up where my house is, they'll be going faster than they probably already are right now.
Get in the corner properties and put in a roundabout.
Savage.
That's, that's more aggressive than anything I was gonna propose. Uh, but.
You're not your pocket park.
Yeah. Turn this into several thousands into a million dollar project. So anyway, few options. We've already talked about one, you could do a four-way stop here. That's probably the easiest and least expensive way to go and it's something we could do pretty quick, right? I'm not saying it's not an option. I just, uh, before we go that route, I'd like to show some of these other options that we have.
Because there's two intersections that people are wanting four-way stops and we really only want to, to put one in. We need to look at which one of those is gonna actually be more beneficial to have the four-way stop.
Listen to, if we even do one. I actually think that we have some options that don't require either of them.
Which one is the pedestrian traffic? Which way does the pedestrian traffic flow at these intersections? Well, the east side, the west side, so.
You, you're gonna have most of your foot traffic that crosses twenty-five seventy-five in this, uh, this neighborhood. Going across the street because there's the school bus, the, the high school picks up right, right around this corner.
So what a pedestrian activated.
So that's, that is one option. Um, and we could look at doing that for, for both, uh, one, I was gonna recommend something like that here because there's a little bit more of the foot traffic.
Mailbox.
Going to the mailboxes, but we got options.
Okay.
So this intersection, we talked about four-way stop as one possibility. And that's cheap, easy, relatively cheap and easy way to start.
Why does it have to be a four-way stop? Why can't we go two-way stop and then turn the other one, the other direction? Who needs to be slowed the most? The through traffic?
Because it's a visibility issue.
Visibility issues we're trying to address, not, not the speeding issue. And because of that, that's where I think something that gets in the way, uh, interrupts the flow, maybe not necessarily stops the flow, interrupts the flow of traffic, uh, is important. And, um, so again, option A, that's gonna be an always stop at that twenty, uh, twenty, twenty-five north. That's one. We talked about that. That's typically gonna be the cheapest, easiest, fastest solution. Another one, um, is down here, option C, uh, for that same intersection, which is, uh, no, no, it's right here. Sorry. Mini roundabout option. And this is a really nice thing. Most of the time roundabouts are large and take up a lot of real estate and would probably require some eminent domain, but, um, there are newer, uh, conventions going in place.
It can fit inside a current.
Right. And this one, if you look, uh, it does say that this is raised, this island in the middle.
There's, it's usually like a little bit of a bubble. You can still drive over it if you needed to, but.
Yeah, but you wouldn't.
You wouldn't. No, no.
Right.
Tire spikes on there.
Reflects.
The statue of Jason.
We definitely don't want that. People will move. So anyway, something like this. And it, and it's actually this exact setup.
And that has.
You could, you could do this.
Put that in both, couldn't you?
You could, uh, if that's, if we found that to be, uh, a desirable approach. The other place where I think this might be beneficial to consider long-term would be when we connect twenty-nine hundred over the canal. The thing that the, uh, committee, the general plan committee that met last week was talking about is actually trying to get this road that crosses over to start providing a way for these neighborhoods to get to the elementary school on the north end instead, uh, routing a lot of parent traffic that way.
How far away are we getting across that canal?
Uh, so it's stubbed out right here? Or do you mean in time?
Yeah. In other words, now you gotta build a bridge. That's the price.
This is down. I mean. As soon as you connect this neighborhood over the canal, then that's gonna be another place of higher traffic. It's sort of, something like a roundabout here might make more sense. Uh, sorry, not there, not, I said twenty-nine hundred, but it's actually this one. This right here. This is.
Yes, it is.
Twenty-nine fifty is the road I meant. I said twenty-nine hundred, I meant twenty-nine fifty. This is the one that's meant to connect over the canal.
Right. So we do have that. It's not stubbed right now, but we do have the
The right way.
Right away there. And, and just kind of a addition to this, crossing over there. So Amy Marriott, you know. So Amy Marriott, you know, Marriott family owns that property. She's actually been talking to, and she has a really great idea of uh, so show like in between the school and the church. She's, we've been talking with her and she's been talking with you, Dot. She'd like to propose a road connection between the school and the church, an actual road, and actually give the school district some of the property behind. So that's more of the pickup drop off area and get them off of twenty seven hundred.
Yeah.
And and once you have a road going into that property, well, guess what? You can then go over the canal. You can go over to um, Higley Road.
Mm hmm.
All of that is much more possible, more dispersed off of twenty seven hundred.
Yeah, that gets quite a bit.
That's at least churning.
I mean, you would still have people on this southern side, which is a pretty significant proportion.
Sure.
But it would get a lot of, a lot of this side, which is where most of the growth is right now anyway.
Let me share with you this. This is called Strava. It monitors um, like foot and and active transportation, walking, ped. This is a heat map, so anywhere that's dark is showing areas of heavy pedestrian, bike, active transportation use. And so this is like um, like a an average, a global average. And then there's a this, so you're kind of seeing most of the pedestrian traffic is coming down twenty five seventy five uh, with, you know.
Bits crossing.
Uh huh. Whereas this is your weekly, well, we can layer on here. And that weekly kind of shows the same thing is you're getting a lot of that, most of your traffic you're seeing come.
It's north and south.
This is an interesting bump up here where all that, where all the new development is.
Oh, right, around thirty one hundred.
Coming east and west.
So you've got a significant amount of people that are on bikes and walking that are using.
And that is where we put the four way.
We already did.
Remember?
I remember that we did one. Geographically, my mind isn't exactly where that is.
And it looks like they're about equal, coming from both sides of twenty five seventy five about equally.
So.
I think it when technology actually helps.
Mm hmm. I never thought to use Strava. I use Strava all the time, but I've never thought.
But what is it that they're tracking? Because somebody has to turn it on.
Log your workouts or it's, you know, you're sharing.
So these are people who happen to be logging their stuff and it's putting it all into the big database. Okay. It's like, it's it's not like the Placer AI where they're tracking every cell phone on earth.
No, this is, this popped in.
Yeah, that's what that placer was doing, is it's tracking everybody's phone.
It's very similar.
Yeah, but that was creepy weird.
You have a bigger data set that would pace.
Sure.
What if we finally done with those lock cameras?
What do you mean? They're, they're there and they've been helping.
Three of them, right?
At least.
Far west.
So, um, anyway, uh, as far as this intersection, this intersection goes. Like I said, this is going to be the harder topic. What what we want to do to make those safer for uh, turning and crossing, both for vehicles and pedestrians.
What's the price of that uh, projected price of that little mini roundabout?
So that one has more um, physical aspects to it.
Mm hmm.
It's somewhere between sixteen eighty thousand, but the the scenario we're looking at here relies a lot more on paint and less on physical barriers, which I think would drop that pretty substantially.
Could we do? There would be some sidewalk rerouting in in this scenario.
That's not bad though.
But the sidewalks are really only already there. You would just be extending.
You'd be rearranging the uh.
Cutting some curbs and.
Yeah.
Cutting the curve.
And you're adding the ADA ramps in a slightly different location. That's basically.
It also gets the housewalk back a little ways from the intersection, which is not all by itself a bad thing.
And if you have bulbous, that also, with no parking zones, puts any visible obstructions back and away from.
It's like a narrowing, that white spot is maybe raised and narrowing.
I really like that.
You can start with.
You can just paint them or you can raise them.
Yeah, I think you can start with, and this is some of the stuff we did in New Jersey, you know, they, and they recommend. Try some of these first, you know, before you invest in the concrete, because they actually had places where there was just paint and then there was other places where it's like, this has been working, so then they put in the concrete. You know, and they recommended, do, you know, do it on purpose. And, you know, because it's not always good, this solution may work right here, but it's not going to be your everywhere solution.
You look down on Grant Avenue in Ogden, what they've done along there. Yeah, they've put the bike lanes on each side and made that little thing that prominent, but they've also elevated the intersections. As you come in from either direction, you come into a slightly elevated uh, intersection. And if you hit that very fast, you're gonna feel it. I mean, it, it's only twenty five miles an hour along there anyway. But it works.
Example of how they've really calmed things down by squishing things, making them very narrow and uncomfortable to go fast.
Right, um, but it also, in those scenarios, the way they've done that, it wouldn't cause problems for like public works with snowplows and and uh, emergency services could still get through there in an emergency.
That because you can plow paint.
I forgot to ask Dave about something I've seen in my past, which is removable speed bumps.
I've asked about that before too.
They can do those, but it does long term damage to the road, so.
You're spilling it.
So what? You, you're opening your asphalt up for water.
You have to spike it, it expands and cracks.
I'm not opposed to trying stuff like that. It's just, we have to know that that means that there's probably long term road costs associated.
Little piece of rubber might do wonders at a lower cost too.
Me and my neighbors were just gonna roll out a fire hose.
Um.
I like just kicking a soccer ball across the road.
The other thing.
Well, good timing.
Do you think that not, so this, that center raised island? I don't know how effective paint is going to be.
No, that needs to be there. That needs to be a physical.
We're talking about the bulbous coming into the intersection. I think you still ought to raise.
The center dome ought to still be.
Yeah.
Twelve inches or high, you know, just something to kind of.
Make it visibly.
I don't want to go over that, you know?
In Hoboken, they had some of those and looked like a big H. We were, we were laughing at them because it's like, is that a helipad? That's kind of what it looked like, the little helipad.
Yeah, so.
Police and get people's attention.
They they ignore it if it's their permanent. Um. So then the other aspect, though, no matter what we do, whether it's stop signs, mini roundabouts, or um, there, there are a couple other options we can look at, including like what you had mentioned. I I forgot to put this into the document, but um, extending the no parking zone at the intersection.
Mm hmm.
Uh, and uh, that would remove possibility of people, well, the likelihood of people parking trailers. Which, that's another one of the biggest complaints on this road, especially, especially in this area, is people parking trailers out there for long periods of time.
They're not supposed to be parking trailers on the street for a long period of time, anywhere.
Right.
Period. Iris, come on.
That that one actually goes straight to work.
Flying.
Again, it relies on enforcement.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, but it it does allow us to change the standard for visibility and safety reasons to extend a no parking.
Something that caught my attention last night was the demographic chart that showed out to twenty fifty. We're gonna try and defeat traffic concerns for kids in some of these zones. A roundabout's gonna be permanent. If we did something less permanent, like signs, they can be removed and either replaced somewhere at a future time or just removed altogether and taken out of the inventory depending on what our city needs are.
So there's, there's the the foot traffic, which is kids a lot, um, and you'll probably see, like you're saying, as the neighborhoods get older.
I asked Tammy down at the bus shop. I said, how many kids are we disrupting of Happy Days? And she did a count for me last week and it was fifty five kids that were bussed.
It are.
And I thought, I thought, how long are they gonna be, were they going to be bussed? One more year, two more years? What was that demographic? And she couldn't give it to me at that time.
Well, they're in school.
But how long, well, which school and for how long?
Elementary.
Or the junior high.
Junior high looking at three.
Some of them may already be on their way out.
They're already in the fifth grade.
Yeah, but so you could be looking at a, you know, a five to three year time window.
We consider that.
Other others coming behind.
Yeah, the other, the other thing with this though is foot traffic is one of the issues. The other issue is the safety of turning onto and off of this road, which that won't change.
Yes.
Um, and and so I I think in either of these locations, the foot traffic here is actually going to be more aligned with the mailboxes.
So the mini roundabout won't change that?
No, I think the mini roundabout will will be.
But the signs won't change it.
The the signs, I, whatever we do.
When you say signs, you mean stop signs?
Whatever, when you're talking about something less permanent, um, we're not talking about just cross traffic. We're talking about coming around the corner, going in different directions. Which one is going to uh, mediate the traffic in the, not speed wise, but just the general flow in the most effective, long term manner? If this is a major intersection in a neighborhood that is always going to be occupied, there are going to be people moving around. So put something in that intersection that for the long term will make it a safer place for whoever. Okay, suppose it gets to be an older neighborhood. If I'm coming through there on my walker, I want to be able to cross the street.
Well, that's a pretty dangerous, because they're all ghosts.
Well, and then, yeah, the fact that they put the mailboxes where they did kind of makes this whole thing interesting.
Yeah.
I mean, it was just a.
That's where the.
Easy place to put it because, you know, no, trust me, we, one of the first things they did was, as as mayor is in that area, helped get the mailboxes moved off of twenty seven hundred, because that was a nightmare. And it was amazing how nobody wanted the mailboxes by their house. That's why they wound up over by the knot park.
Um, yes. Roundabout, it is right here. I just scrolled past it. So as far as the long term effect of a roundabout, you dot has some information about this. Um, their document is more focused on the speed reduction, but um, it's, once it's in, it's actually one of the most effective tools uh, long term.
Mm hmm.
And it's, it, the the hard part of these is the cost upfront, right? Usually land acquisition or whatnot, but we could try the mini roundabout for a fraction of this cost, no eminent domain, anything like that.
Yeah, one to three.
Especially where that's in a residential neighborhood.
In that neighborhood.
Where the speed's already supposed to be twenty five or less, and so putting that in is, you know, it's not like you're trying to slow down a thirty or forty mile an hour speed down to fifteen. You're twenty five going down to fifteen.
Well, we've already got one of these on the docket anyway.
Two.
Two.
So.
Like I said, we've already got two of these.
They're in other, yeah.
The other safety aspect to you with roundabouts is assuming everybody's using it the right way, you really don't have to worry about traffic coming from one direction.
That's right.
Yeah, o- only on the driver's side, really.
Right, and so as far as a turning safety aspect, it's kind of a no, a no brainer that that will improve long term safety.
Left hand turns are easy.
Yeah, so.
Takes you longer to get there.
But then there's also one other aspect uh, that is unique to this situation, not, uh, and is because of the bend. And that is, whatever we do at these intersections, there's still going to be a limited sight visibility, which means that people coming down twenty five seventy five either direction are going to get kind of surprised that, oh, there's a roundabout there, or if we do four way stop, there's, right? And so the idea would be.
They were surprised on a straightaway because there's a four way stop.
And that's, that's an excellent.
With lights.
Because you can see that one coming because they trim back the trees and everything.
And then you can put the stop ahead sign before the stop.
That's, that's the next thing is.
You know, it's good to have a stop warning.
Give warning signs, you know, adequately far back before the bend saying, there's a roundabout coming. There's a four way stop coming. There's a lighted crosswalk coming. Um, and if we were to do one of those pedestrian lighted crosswalks at either scenario, um, then I I think the other thing we'd want to consider with that is having not only the the lights at the sidewalk, but you can, uh, according to MUTCD, you can have a certain distance further back to give advance notice of there's something coming around the bend, and so hook up those lights to something in advance so they can know, oh, there's a pedestrian crossing up ahead.
Well, it's like when you come down out of uh, the canyon into Brigham City, they've got that set of lights up the road that says, this light's about to change.
Yeah.
And it'll start flashing yellow, and you know that you're not going to make, don't try to make the light, because you ain't going to make this.
They go through the accelerator, yeah.
And so there's, there is, you could have those integrated in some way to say there's something active going on at this intersection. I don't know how far you go with that, but there are some ways to give advance notice of what's happening down here.
Those lights get a little expensive because of the controllability.
Yeah, well, there can be other.
Ex- expense is a whole nother part of this conversation. There, there's one more thing that I uh, I've seen, and I'm sure there's going to be opinions about it, and that is kind of the, you ever seen the advanced like little, I call them rumble strips? To let you know you're coming up on something, because you can have painted ones, but sometimes they don't, they fade or whatever. But I've seen like you're coming up on a stop sign or something like that.
Does that have like a noise impact on the neighbors?
In the neighbors, so they can hear people bumping down the road?
Um, maybe.
Or would it have impact for maintainability, just like.
Right, like I said, plenty of opinions about how effective they are.
Road braille for the, for blind people?
Huh?
Yeah.
Road braille.
Braille for blind people?
Well, it's just like what they do, you know, they put it in the center lines a lot now. They've, they've been putting them on the sides for quite some time, but I've also seen it, especially in very rural areas.
Have them for twenty five mile an hour, thirty mile an hour, fifty mile an hour.
Yeah.
That depends on, that determines the depth, so they're variable, but.
Yeah, but it it's an indicator that something's coming up. It's, I don't know if it's more effective or less effective, but it's different.
Those are indentations not raised, right?
Right, yes.
So.
If a plow happens to grab one.
Oh, yeah.
It's the rubber, but are we gonna be tearing it out?
Well, but if you do them where you're actually grinding into the pavement, you're below surface.
I'm most familiar with, they say.
It's in the snow.
Grooves.
Where your blade catches on it and you take out a chunk of asphalt.
Yeah, because if if they go at it perpendicular to, I guess, the blade is parallel with the.
Quite nearly an angle.
Divids.
It's sliding.
But yeah, if they've got an angle on the blade and they, and they make sure that they go over it, then that probably eliminates that problem. But um, I don't know, that's not something to consider. Something to talk to public works about. Um, but there's also two different types of the warning signs. There's a, there's a really expensive ones, the Hawk systems, and those are right here, sixty thousand plus.
Yeah, those one to see on wall.
And and I think that's overkill for a neighborhood, uh, but then there's the ones kind of like what we have on twenty seven hundred already.
Right there, yeah.
Right here.
The activated push the buttons, lanky lights.
I don't remember.
Yeah, we have two sets.
I don't remember what the cost of those ones were, but uh, they're significantly less than the Hawk systems.
Yeah. And none, none of them are free.
No, um, so anyway, uh.
So do we have any grant opportunities to help fund some of these options?
You do from a safety perspective.
Yeah.
So I guess the question now is, what do we do next? What do we, what are we liking? Do we need to do more investigation into a few things? Um, but especially where we're kind of in grant season, like letter of intent. It would be good to make some decisions on what we want to do, so if it does, uh, if we decide to do something that's going to require grant money, we get on that.
Yeah, I think. At this point, indecision is a decision.
It is.
And so I think we ought to try to come to some kind of a consensus about what would be the best way to start. Uh, I don't want to throw good money after bad, and so I don't want to spend a little bit on something we end up tearing out because we should have done something a little better in the first place. Uh, I'd rather just step it up a notch and say, yeah, that would have been nice, but this will be a better answer. Ask a little bit more, a little bit more in the beginning, but then we're, we're there instead of kind of experimenting. And in the meantime, spending money we could have used initially to just get where we wanted to be anyway.
In some of these cases, we can do some trial of things so that we don't get fully invested in something that's not going to work.
So I was wondering if this is a good place for one of those, you know, like to pilot and test. So like you saw, you mentioned Hoboken, like, let's try that mini roundabout with some, you know, some delineators and.
Paint the roundabout.
Just paint it.
And don't do any mechanical, physical things until we know if people are gonna respond at all. If they responded to paint, then you know they're gonna darn well respond to physical pumps in the middle of the road.
Paint, but then I think in the middle you'd have to do some delineating, some delineators or something in the middle.
There'd have to be some sort of visual indicator so they know that it's.
It would change, yeah, to change the behavior.
Where to go, it's this one. It's this one, so they put, this is an all-way yield, right, because it's, it's now a roundabout, so. The, the twenty-eight, twenty, or twenty-eight. Twenty-five, yeah, would lose its stop signs, they'd get yield signs, and we'd paint out the, the system if we wanted to go try that. Honestly. I would love to see us try something like this here.
I like that, of all the things you've put up, that's the one that appeals to me the most. In terms of just. Long-term viability.
I mean, we'll have to do some thinking about how we want to address it, because. These ones, for example, have the crosswalk set back rather than where they're currently at.
Well, you don't want the crosswalk in the middle of the roundabout, you got to come back away from it.
And so there would still be some cost associated with this.
Right, some curb cuts and some thing.
And if people have grass or rock or something here.
But they don't own that.
No, but.
Just maintain it, yeah.
They maintain it, but if we need to cut into those parking strips. Uh, and use some of that, that's.
You've got your primary expense, and that can't be too old or bad.
Would you be willing to do something to get rid of your curbing like grass or, or trees? If we can help, want to flip the strip a little bit, flip the strip as part of this. As long as it bucket it.
Forward, okay, so.
So you, so we were exploring this for twenty-eight, twenty-five? And what for twenty-nine hundred?
Um, well, especially where we're just exploring. Maybe we start with this, because I think, again, and I'm, I'm not the expert, this is where it would be nice to get an expert involved. But with what I've seen other cities doing. I think it probably makes sense to do. The roundabout, mini roundabout here, and then probably just the pedestrian flashing signs here. But that's, I think, that was about a twenty thousand dollar estimated cost to put that in, so it's not. Just a little bit to throw at it, so if we started just a twenty-eight, twenty-five. With the mini roundabout, start with the paint edition of it. And then add in the cement barrier in the middle later.
Over time, yeah.
Then. It's a start, we actually, you know, it's a trial run, learn a lot from it, or we can use that as. As a reason to do similar things or avoid, if it turns out worse. Right, but we get to learn.
We don't know how it's going to work until we at least try it.
Well, and then we could, I mean, if we had space there, we could put our temporary, our mobile. Speed thing there to get counts and.
Yeah, well, that's, that's part of the thing I like about the, the mobile speed thing is. We can get data before and after a trial of something. And then, yeah, is it working or not? But, you know, as you were saying, it's also important to make sure that visibility and don't get it run over. Yeah.
Okay, now you can see if there's any.
We don't have any baseline for that part of twenty-eight, twenty-five.
That's just speed. And it's further down.
So then, we want then for the next thing to be to start pricing things out and then make.
Well, and seeing if there's any funding. Like you said, for safety, if there's some grant money or whatever that we could apply for.
What we, what we can do is decide this is something we want to try. Right?
Oh, I know what you're talking about, yep. Yeah.
So what we tend to talk about is we gather data, that's me, and stuff like that, add some of that, maybe get some guidance, or maybe these experience. Something like, yeah, so you can get your reading sign, just sort of see now. That would, that'd be a good, that'd be a lot better than you just, yes. No, but that's what the, the speed, speed signs just give us data to work.
So you get your flag?
They didn't give me a flag.
I thought you got a whole thing.
I don't know, I went down there the other day, I'm here recorded, they gave me the little stickers. The little girl at the desk, I don't think knew what else goes with them.
She was like, no, no, you couldn't.
Why should we have pictures? I've got pictures of me on every beat. There's a flag, I want, no, what they do is they have a flag, you can take witness.
Oh, and then they have to give it back?
Then you have to give it back, so you can take it and sign it on top of each. Then you have to give it back to them, so it's a loner, it's not a keeper.
It goes up. Yeah, just.
It doesn't go up very far. You're always easily identifiable when I see you driving around on the road.
Who you pray for?
It's the what? Oh, is it really?
Nobody needs that, I can't call them suspicious.
Oh, do you? That is funny. Well, every time I see the gray duly with the bumper guard up there, I go.
Hello, Lindsay, who is this? Hi, Bree. Welcome. Well, we're happy to see you here. Your thing. One point nine million, we're not giving those kind of pay raises to city officers, no.
One point nine mil.
I'm telling you what.
Oh, hey, I guess, okay, change in everything.
We changing it?
We're bringing Boyd on board.
We got a scoot, got people down.
Need another microphone.
I'm usually right here, anyway.
Grab another mic. Okay, Lindsay, I'm sorry, I'm just thinking out loud.
Hi.
Were you able to give us the answer on the?
Are you holding up?
Change what? I'm fine with if that's the recommendation, I hadn't heard anything further.
Yeah, I think that's how we want to move forward.
For what?
For whom? That's at least a little more legible. Hey, two-second warning. Okay, like, welcome everybody, that we're going to bring this meeting to order. We had a work session a little earlier, five-thirty, talking about the traffic safety committee. Options, so that, that went over very well, I think. Let's see, we're going to start off with an opening ceremony. David's going to offer a prayer and I will lead us in the pledge.
Our Father in Heaven, as we assemble here this evening in this city council. We are grateful for all that enables us to have the freedom to do. In our communities and as citizens in our neighborhoods, those things that lend to the quality of life and. The benefit of our community. We ask thee to bless us as we work together, that we may listen to one another, that we may. Be sound in our judgments. And that we may choose to do those things that are right and good. And ask thee to watch over and help us as we do so in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Everybody will rise, remove your hats, be heaven, repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, David. Thank you all. Okay, comments and reports, we're going to start off with public comments, is there anybody in the. Gallery who would like to come up and share some thoughts or ideas or want to address this at all? You get two minutes, anyone? Nobody? Okay, moving on, report from planning commission. Diet, looks like you get the joy of it again. Appreciate it.
Okay, we held our. Meetings on last Thursday. August twenty-eighth, we had a five-thirty work session and we went. Through and reviewed the proposal, the proposed development agreement for Peterson Incorporated. And then we, we went into our regular meeting. And we. One of, we, there's two of them on your agenda tonight, one is a public, we held a public hearing. To regard to amend an ordinance for property less than, on, for accessory buildings on property less than an acre. To increase the building height by one foot. To sit to twenty-one feet at the peak and six, from twenty to twenty-one feet at the peak and fifteen to sixteen feet on the side walls. And that is because most garage doors are fourteen feet. And they will accommodate those because that's the height that people with RVs and things like that. And that's why we're doing it, and that was just at Nate's request. And then also, then we held a public hearing on the development agreement and there was no comments, no issues. And we passed the resolution and. We approved the minutes and wrapped it up, so it was a pretty short meeting.
Sounds like it was exciting.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Watching paint dry.
Hey.
Now, anything, we're working on the, we're currently working on the general plan. And you all received an invitation to hold for a five-thirty work session in two weeks.
Okay, that's in two weeks, on what day?
I don't know. The eighteenth, thank you.
Eighteenth, okay. You want to do a joint session?
It's a joint session with the planning commission, city council, we, we've got the red line documents, we reviewed completely the. General plan, and so we just want to go through the red lines with the city council, and then we will.
Is this before city council?
Yes, five-thirty, and what we're trying to do is we're trying to get everything wrapped up and completed. With the open house and the public hearing and everything by the. Uh, I think by the eighteenth of November, if I'm not mistaken, so we're trying to get it wrapped up before the holidays and stuff. Anything else?
Hey, you guys got any questions? And, yeah, and before you go, there is our next thing about assignments, if there's any more assignments.
Yeah, we're kind of bored on the planning commission, so just stack it on.
If you have anything right now, I'm sure we'll come up with an idea.
Oh, I'm sure you will.
Okay, that takes care of B and A, so, thank you, Lyle. Okay, next in the consent items, consider approval of minutes dated August twenty-first, twenty twenty-five.
We approve the minutes for August twenty-first, twenty twenty-five?
I'll second.
Tim and Katie, our motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Passes. Consider approval of bills dated September third, twenty twenty-five.
Motion that we, that we approve the bills dated September third, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Bob and Dave, our motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, passes. Onto the business items. Consideration of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero eight. Amending accessory building wall and eve height requirements on lots less than an acre. Uh, Lyle gave us a good rundown of what that meant, this was requested from our building inspector because he was getting a lot, it wasn't making sense, so. One of the reasons for changing this is because it makes sense with the buildings they're putting in, so. Any comments, questions? Motions?
The only thing that changed was that one foot on the.
Yeah.
The rest are all the same setbacks and everything, so. I don't have any questions, that looks good.
Motions?
Yep, I'll move that we approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh eight amending the accessory building. Wall and eve height requirements on lots less than an acre.
I'll second.
Okay, Tim and Katie, our motion is second, being an ordinance, we'll do this roll call, Tim?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Okay, sounded unanimous to me. Okay, consideration of Peterson Inc. Development Agreement. Do we have anyone here that wants to explain more of it to us? Or did we all read it fully and we understand it completely?
Yeah.
Just so that we're not just guessing, thank you, and your name is?
Jim Flint.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I thought. Everything was in your packet, if you have any questions, basically it's taking a seven-acre parcel. With a park parcel that fulfills the ten percent landscaping requirement. It takes the other twenty-one acres and mandates. That any building permit or any kind of site plan application. Will immediately trigger a need to fulfill the code in totality from the landscaping. Then there's a couple of things, there's a building. Called the, the ride building that has to be taken down prior to occupants.
What is the building they're putting up just to the side of that to the north?
It's, um, it's between buildings six and nine, it's where the parking lot is.
No, it's way in the back, it's almost by the ride building, there's a structure going in right there, what is that?
Have to defer to.
One up, identify yourself and.
That might be a sandblaster building.
I'm Jeff Law, High Country Global Solutions, where I own the company that's contracted to build this new building. That, that triggered all of this activity that's going on, to answer your question, David, it's, uh. It's a old blast booth that they pulled out of Hill Air Force Base, and they're putting it in, just reconstructing it in that area, so.
Did that require any site plan approval or anything from the city?
It did, yeah, there's a building and permit that's in place for that building. I don't, we don't have anything to do with that, I just know that, that's.
I just don't recall it coming here, so it's new to me.
This is, this is that sandblaster they pulled out from Hill, you said, okay, they came, I think it was. A year, year and a half ago or something, yeah, it's been, it's been a day or two. And, yeah, we, we saw the site plan and it's, you remember, I don't know if, can you remember that?
I do not.
You brought it up and I'm pretty sure that it's been permitted and everything, I mean. Yeah. I remember it coming through and we talked about it. And they sat over there in that site where the new building is going to go for quite some time. Yeah, and so.
Yeah, I knew that there was a conditional use permit regarding the ride building, and that that was to be a temporary structure. So if this one went ahead appropriately.
It did.
Uh, and that other one's coming down, I don't have a problem, I just, I saw it going up. And I had no recollection or idea of. I just, I saw it going up and I had no recollection or idea of, and it might have happened before I came on City Council, I don't know. It's been, it's been a good year, year and a half, if not longer. So I just wanted some clarification on how that one came to be while the Ride Building was still there. Because there wasn't supposed to be anything else happen there till that Ride Building came down. That would have been the next, the next step. I'll have to go back and find, see if I can find the minutes, but it's been... It's all right, I'm not hung up about it. It's been a good while, so I can vouch for it.
Yeah, that came up and so I, we went verified that the building permit and everything with Nate and various other people.
I appreciate, thank you.
I was gonna give you an update on the, on the temporary building that they put in that seems to be somewhat permanent. That's coming, that's gonna start coming down on September 30th. We have it in the development agreement that it'll be done before they occupy the new building that we're building. But I've negotiated my company to go in and tear that building down with Peterson, Inc. We're gonna start that on September 30th.
That's the Ride Building.
That's the Ride Building. That's when they were building the roller coaster.
And I had a quick question for you, Jim. On, because we, there's some, I'm gonna say some parcel adjustments. Have those happened or is that happening because of this development agreement?
We've got the, we've got the survey map and the legal descriptions all prepared.
Okay.
That just...
Those still have to be recorded and all that before we actually have separate?
You're right.
Adjusted parcels is what I mean, they're already separate numbers. But they're gonna be, because one's gonna be what, seven acres, the other one's 21 acres? That's not what they are right now.
You're right.
So this, and Liam can help me, so this development agreement helps ensure that all happens too, if I read it correctly?
Can you explain the, what, the antithesis of that, why we went down that path with the lot line?
Oh, why is it getting adjusted? That's a Planning Commission question. I didn't get into the background of why they want to adjust it.
Because it's seven acres and they have point most, or point seven acres of, that's their 10%.
Well, no, I mean, because there's lot line adjustments on the bigger 21 acre parcel as well.
Yeah.
There was a, on the southerly side, there was a lot line going right through a building.
Yeah.
So we had to push that southerly.
So all of that lot line adjustment will happen.
Yeah. This is still all in, and then one, this doesn't necessitate any rezoning of any of that property, does it?
Correct, no. It doesn't.
There was an email that we received about the ownership of the stormwater and irrigation laterals out there that we received today. Did we, did we get an answer to that? Okay.
Western irrigation?
Okay. I, I trust Robbie. I trust others too, but I really trust Robbie.
When, when this issue came up before the development, or before the work session last week, I, I actually called Robbie and chatted with him extensively about where that goes and, and how it goes out because there was a concern that they'd have to get an agreement from Western Irrigation or something to, to dump the water. And he told me specifically that it, it's our ditches and it's going down through and, and that's the way I explained it in the work session, hence the email that came in today because the, the Western Irrigation just barely was able to see the video today, so. And that's, I just went off that information and I agree, I trust Robbie. Does that have a bearing on this development agreement? No, uh-uh. No, because, because it doesn't, it, it, it's our, it's our system. It goes under the canal through a siphon. It comes out the other side, on the west side of the canal and it just filters out through the, through our network.
Okay, so are we prepared, do we have any more questions?
I have one comment to make. I feel like we've been taken advantage of a little bit of, by the Peterson Corporation with the changes that they've made to their site without approval and have been kind of moving without, with impunity as to do whatever they see fit to do on that parcel without following our regulations and our requirements by code. And I appreciate the work that the Planning Commission has done to negotiate this agreement. And I, I like the wording in it, but I think it's, you know, that any other changes need to, you know, force that compliance with the landscaping issue. And I just want, I hope this message gets back to them that, you know, these, these processes are in place for a reason and our code is set up this way for a reason. And there's a process for doing these things that needs to be followed moving forward.
I think this is, send a very signal message in that regard.
Thank you, Katie, thank you, Jim. And if no more questions, I'm up for a motion on the development agreement.
Move we approve the development agreement.
I'll second.
Katie and Boyd, our motion is second. I'm gonna go ahead and roll call this to be sure. Bob?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Okay, sounds unanimous on the development agreement. Okay, next piece of this, so hopefully, don't, don't leave yet. Consideration of the Peterson, Inc., Modified Site Plan Request. Do you have any questions once again of these folks about the site plan request? Or did we kinda cover it in the previous one?
I think we did. Uh, I think we just need to make sure that we have very clear and accessible information about everything that we enter into with Peterson. Because there have been changes in ownership over the years with management. Case in point is the Ride Building. When that conditional use permit was issued and that was back like in 2017, it was explicit in there that that was a temporary building. Well, here we are, eight years later and it's still there. And so now the word temporary becomes a very ambiguous term. What's temporary? You know, something that doesn't last 100 years. That was supposed to come down when that project was finished. And it took some digging to go back and find that conditional use permit, did it not? For that particular issue? And so... Yep, and so we just need to make sure, when we're dealing with something as, as big as this corporation is, that everything is explicit now and retrievable later. If we have to come back and say, no, this is what you agreed to, this is what we expect to have happen. And size in this case shouldn't matter. They should be held to the same accountability as a little individual one man show here in town. We all have to live by the same rules, I just wanna make sure we can track what we do.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Do you happen to have a motion on the end of that?
I'll make a motion that we approve the modified site plan request as presented.
Okay, David and Boyd, our motion is second. I'm gonna roll call it again, starting with Tim.
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Sounds like another unanimous. Thank you, guys. You can stay if you want, or you can leave. Just don't be noisy.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay. Next thing on the agenda, consideration of Building Blocks Party Bucks. Don't say that too fast. Community Engagement Program. Katie?
Will you pull up the flyer that's in there for me? So in my assignment, as community engagement and Angie and I have been working on piloting some neighborhood and community development programs. These are, we're looking at things to increase neighborhood cohesion, to get people out meeting each other, learning more about their neighbors, bringing groups together and overall just building pride in your, in your neighborhood and in our city and getting people meeting each other because, you know, we all sometimes need an excuse to knock on our neighbor's door and introduce ourselves, so. Our, this idea came together after looking at some other similar programs the other cities have done. Twill, the city has a similar program. The city of Edmonton does this, so we kinda picked and pulled from different cities, similar programs in different cities and brainstormed some ideas on how this might work best for Far West. And so the program name is Building Blocks and it's basically a, an in, an incentive program for neighbors to plan and host block parties in their, in their neighborhoods. What we're proposing is offering up to $150 reimbursement for purchasing supplies for a block party, whether that's paper goods, barbecue supplies, hamburgers, hot dogs, anything that would help facilitate a block party. And then also throwing in the, a $50 Bowery rental if they would like to host their block party at a park and in the Bowery. We would waive the $50 Bowery rental. We do have, so you'll see, this is the flyer here that kinda gives information about it. The next is the Block Party Kit that gives instructions and tips and best practices for how to go about organizing and inviting your neighbors to your block party. And then the last page is an application. So we currently have a line item in our budget, in our approved budget for community engagement, it's $8,000. That is not close to how much we're proposing to take with this. We are limiting it to the first 10 parties to register. So, and then we've set aside $500 for supplies, whether that's additional yard games to replace things. In the application, we ask for information about their event, what type, what they're planning to do for their block party. And then we've asked them that they invite a council member or mayor to their block party to attend so that we can see, you know, yes, this was more than just an extended family gathering and also give us some time to meet new people in our neighborhoods and outside of our immediate circle. Payment and reimbursement would come after the party. They would, when, once their party, their block party was approved, they could come in and check out one of our yard games. We've got Connect Four, the seniors, the senior center has them currently, whether it's Connect Four, Giant Jenga, Cornhole. So they would get a yard game that they could take for their party. Then when they come back, check back in the yard game, present us with receipts. We would reimburse them for up to $150 for their party supplies. For, and this, you know, obviously things like alcohol or would not be reimbursable. And, and then, yeah, so that's kind of the general, general outline of the program. And, yeah, I'm open to any questions.
What, what can, what is considered a block? And the question I was thinking about after I read this was, could you merge two blocks together? Could there be dual neighborhood parties?
A little broader. To make it into...
Very few actual blocks in Far West.
I mean, that's...
Yeah, I think it's like, I mean...
A street.
Yeah, a street or if, I mean, if there was two streets that wanted to apply and, you know, and they had, you know, they had...
You don't really care how many people are there, do you?
No.
So it could be as broad as they want, they're just gonna get reimbursed for the initial Bowery and, and supplies. If it goes beyond that, then they can all just help chip in.
Yeah, there's kinda some natural neighborhoods that we have.
Yeah, there are. But I was thinking more along the lines of, could, could there be dual requests for funding to expand it to a larger volume of people?
That's a possibility.
It doesn't say yes or no. The second thought I had was your, your comment about alcohol because we would not want the liability that would go along with that if something silly would happen. And then, is there any other way to use this? Because I thought if somebody called me, I'm certainly gonna talk about being block captains because that's my block. Or maybe it would be, maybe I'll get called to another block, but we're gonna talk about it. Is there a way to bring in any city functions or comments on a formal level rather than just have a casual conversation if it happens to come up?
So you're saying like...
Have some ideas to bring to the people, some, and let them know about the city.
Oh, great, yeah.
You mean like some certain stuff or some active transportation stuff?
Yeah, I think that's a great opportunity.
Make that a part of this, since we have to, one of us has to be there.
Yeah, and I think you can, I think that's a great use of the time is to, you know, go and to share information about, you know, whatever responsibility or program or anything that we need support with to kinda cross pollinate there, I think that's a good idea.
And then I visualized, depending on who comes, opening up the ground, put in a burn pit for a, a pig. Who's responsible for closing that hole back up?
Well, hopefully they're not doing it on, in our roads or...
Well, I was thinking, I was thinking of the parks. Just restrict that.
Yeah, no.
This could get, this could get way out of hand.
No pig pits. Unless we do it on purpose.
Yeah.
Then we have a permanent pit, pig, or pig pit.
Pig pit?
Pig pit.
That's all I had, my thoughts.
I, I, just, I like the idea because I've been kinda doing this.
Yeah, exactly.
It encourages, it encourages what we want to happen in the city.
Sure.
You know, we want them to get together and to be neighbors.
As neighbors, because I know some of these happen within like, we'll call it the wards, but this needs to be inclusive of also everyone.
Well, I saw kind of a time schedule now or by the end of September? Or were you, was the vision in the spring?
We wanted to try it this fall and see how, what the reception was. We know we're kind of in a truncated timeframe because of the seasons changing.
Does it have to be outdoors?
I mean, and it doesn't necessarily have to be outdoors. And, you know, I think we would kind of go through those, that first 10 and see how things go and, you know, revisit, revisit any regulations or any, you know, improvements that we could make to the program and then maybe launch it again in the spring.
Yeah, this shouldn't be an opportunity for a ward to get reimbursed for their ward Halloween party or whatever. In other words, there ought to be some constraints on, I don't know how to put this, the organizational structure, you know, that represents the activity. It should be a block, not, not a church, not a club, it should be the block.
Yeah, and we say in here in the guide, it says be inclusive, invite longtime and new neighbors as well as those who may need extra support.
And I have two brand new neighbors and I thought, oh, this would be perfect. Yeah.
So should we get approval to move forward with this? Angie and I, we're gonna work on kind of a, getting that, the word out and advertising it and, and then we also are gonna have kind of like a stock invitation that people could just fill out and...
I think you do need to have a couple of exclusions in there though because some ward activity committee chairman might say, dang, you know, we gotta, this is gonna, we're gonna call this a block party and it's gonna be the first ward and we're gonna have a good time and get some help from the city.
How do you write that so...
I don't know, but I think there ought to be some exclusions about formal organizations shouldn't be using this to support their functions. There's ought to be an informal...
Truly neighbors.
Truly neighbors, not, not...
Citizens generated activity.
And not an organization, it shouldn't be...
Yeah.
Yeah, it should, well, it could still be, it could still be utilized in the wrong way regardless if it's the person, because that person could belong to a ward. You could have a soccer club or a baseball league or somebody else saying, hey, the city's gonna help us pay for our end of the year party. No, we're not. No, we're not. In good faith, I think the people are gonna understand what it's supposed to be.
Kind of that motivation to include a city council member, a mayor, because then you show up and you're like, wait, this is not a block party.
We want them to know that as they fill out the application. They need to know that from the front end and not from the back end. We don't wanna go in and void their application after they've had their party.
I, I personally like it and I think it's worth a try. I mean, you won't know until you actually try.
The whole idea, I just think you need to put a couple little exclusive guidelines in there about who qualifies for this and who does not. So it doesn't just become kind of a carte blanche, city funded party. Bob and Dave's party, come to our driveway if you want, but it's our party. I don't want, it just needs to be the block.
If you want to.
Yeah.
We can work on that, so make... I like that idea of who qualifies. Any other? So our budget for this, with program for this fall would be $2,000.
That's cool.
And that's within your current budget? So does, do we need action?
I will move that we, as...
I will move that we, as the city council, give approval for Katie and this committee to continue going forward with the building blocks program for the city.
I have a Tim.
A second.
And a Katie. I think this one, we can just do as consent, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Sounds unanimous to me. We're going to have some block parties. Okay, next, consideration of traffic committee recommendations for increased traffic safety. We did have a work session before this. There were a couple of things for, that we talked about. And I think there was a couple of things we thought that maybe we could actually take some action on. Jason, did you want to come up and summarize those things that we talked about? And remind us of the things that we're going to take action on or consider taking action on?
Yeah, so the three things. First was using the data that we got from the signs. We recognized hotspots in, in times and days on three different roads that we have traffic signs. So I think you actually already took action on that and talked to.
Officer Horton.
Officer Horton, thank you.
He left to go do it now.
He's probably catching people right now.
He appeared, so I was, took advantage of it.
So that's, that's already been great. And I want to thank everybody here for the help in getting that organized, so we could start looking at that and, and use that as a decision making tool. Second was the initiative to start adding to our code, safety standards for new developments. And including in that research with hopefully some funding for expert help from some sort of like traffic engineering expert to be involved in helping us set what the, we know kind of what the hotspots are, the areas that we, we realize we want to try to avoid. But what the recommended tools and solutions are for that from an expert's opinion. So that's, that's the second recommendation. I think that's the, the second action item. And I don't know if you want to separate these.
Yeah, let's do it a little bit. So on, on the one, so we have already talked with, that was an easy one. As far as the consideration for the second one, do we, as a council, I would like to have a motion, basically, I guess authorizing the traffic committee to get with the planning commission and start working towards the code. Yes, so.
I note that we authorize the traffic committee and planning commission to move, work, start working on code updates for traffic calming for new development.
That included some work with the general plan, did it not?
So the, it doesn't need to, the general plans already got, got some effort there, some focus. And again, the general plan would be general, there's nothing specific. It would just be, this is the, kind of the spirit of the law.
I'll second Katie's motion.
Okay, Katie and David are motion second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed to this, say nay. Okay, it sounds like you have authorization to go forth with some code updates and whatnot. And it sounds like you're already working with the general plan, with those folks to get it in there that helps trigger this. So is there anything more that we need to consider?
So just the third item that we were talking about, which was, and I want to make sure very clear about this, because there have been a number of complaints. But one of the things that came up recently was the safety of the limited visibility on 2575, where the bend is north of 2700. And in our work session, we talked about a number of different ways that could be addressed. The mini roundabout that, I don't know if we want to bring that up in, in this. It's, oh, it might not still be open based on what I'm seeing.
I think he has something that was open.
It's not a, it's not a tab in the browser, it was an image. If you go to the open folder down at the bottom.
Right there.
Yeah, and then go back to the August 21st council meeting folder. There is in that, I think it's that roundabout traffic coming, yeah, right there. Just for reference, everybody here. This is an example, it's not a specific scenario that we would need to prescribe here. But I think what the work session talked about was implementing something like this with some additional research to figure out the best way to implement this.
Could we go ahead with a feasibility study on this?
Say that again?
Could we go ahead with a feasibility study on this kind of an application?
I think that's the next step is, is to, to look at feasibility costs, things like that.
You need to get started on it.
I think so.
And I think initially what we were talking about was implementing this with the, the lower cost all paint solution. And then if it works, look at adding an actual cement roundabout in the center later. It, just so we can start moving forward if it, the feasibility and cost aspect gets approved.
Who would we proceed with in order to do this? In other words, is city staff going to do this? We need a little more outside help, I think, like you said, from.
Yeah, I actually don't know who the next.
I don't know if Jones would be good for this.
Perhaps we reach out to the WFRC folks to help us get the right folks to get this started. So I guess what we're contemplating here is getting started on this and trying this and finding out what the best thing to do instead of authorizing the money in the paint.
No, we need to know, yeah.
Let's make the decision on purpose.
Need to know how to go ahead with this.
Yep, so I guess I would like a motion on whether we want to pursue this trial of a mini roundabout in a particular location to be defined by the traffic committee.
I make a motion that we move forward with exploring the idea of a temporary, maybe to be permanent roundabout at, along 2575. Looking into initially feasibility and cost and then possibly moving into some implementation.
I'll second the motion.
I would suggest that you identify that as a mini roundabout so that we don't cause panic in the neighborhood about a full blown traffic item there, okay?
I think we didn't mention in this meeting, but that specifically means there's no kind of imminent domain requirement.
We're not taking anybody's property away.
All within the existing footprint.
It's all within the traffic calming of things. We're trying to address concerns that residents have.
I'll second Katie's motion with that clarification.
We have Katie, actually Bob already seconded.
Did you second it?
Oh, all right.
You can second and a half.
I'll second the second.
You can third it. Okay, Katie and Bob are motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to this? Okay, you have authorization to go forth and safeguard us.
Call on us if you need some help.
Thank you, Jason. Okay, now for our favorite part of the meeting, area council follow up, report on assignments. I'm going to start with Bob, because I think I started with Tim last time.
I don't have a lot. There wasn't anything significant with the county for emergency management or CIR. There wasn't anything for the CIR, because we haven't held our meeting yet. The only thing that I have to report on is the meeting that we had last night with WFRC and the LAA training. So the municipalities, local municipalities were invited to go to a training session. And they purposefully excluded the county, the state, and other higher levels of management or of government. So they could talk specifically to our needs and our desires and train us at our level. And it was very, very educational. I really appreciated the opportunity that we had to learn what laws, how they work, what ordinances are compared to laws and other aspects. We gave feedback on what we thought we should be doing within the cities, the municipalities here. And it was a very, very beneficial training. And that's where I'm going to yield, because there were some other people at the training that will have more to say.
I hope that they feel it. And yeah, I, I did come in late, but I thought it was, I, I go to these types of things a lot. And it's always nice to be able to collaborate with our neighboring communities and get their feel on things. That's probably one of the best things that we get out of this.
Hear what their concerns were compared to ours, yeah.
And sometimes they're the same, sometimes they're not.
Sometimes they remind you of concerns that we might have that we didn't realize.
Yeah, okay. Anything else, Bob? Thank you. David?
I always love it when I'm concerned about something I didn't know I was concerned about until I'm concerned about it. That's good.
What I don't know, I don't know. My only report at this point is that Jason and I have called our youth city council back together after a summer hiatus. Those kids have been all over the world. And we had five of our six members there a week ago. They're, they have some assignments they're working on. One of them is a more permanent, attendable time when they can find time to be together with each other. These are busy kids and it's a challenge for them. They have some assignments to work with Angie and our events committee in terms of trunk or treat. And some of that specifically was trying to get more involvement, trying to get more trunks with treats. We've kind of seen that decline a little bit in the last couple of years. And so they're going to help with that and I think they'll do some good things. I also told them to get ahold of Dixie with this community arts program and see if there's something that they can do from here to help her with what she's doing with that production. To see if we can get a little more involvement from our community besides just the check. And so we send them off in that direction a little bit as well. And that was the basic of our, the basics of our meeting with them. Try to get them back up and running a little bit again. But we've got six young people who are still committed and want to be our youth city council. Kennedy Hansen's still the mayor. And so I'm encouraged. I'm going to be gone for most of the rest of this month. And Jason's going to try to get them back together again for another meeting. We've already talked about it and I appreciate his help with that. And so that's what I have, unless you have a question about it.
I don't have any. Okay, thank you, David.
I've been somewhat AWOL, so I'm sorry. Just a couple of things that are going on. We did meet as a fire board and we did approve what we were asking for on the landing, the landing project, the CRA. So it was, it was close, but we, it passed, so I think that's a positive thing. I don't know how many of you are receiving calls from those guys, but I received one from Jorn. There's some.
I didn't realize they were getting calls.
I tried to call you today anyway, but so, anyway, they're, they're concerned. But they haven't bought the land yet and so just be aware of that. And then our, our board meeting for fires next week, so that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Sorry I wasn't available. Okay, thank you. Katie?
Want to say it's really nice to have air conditioning back. Feels a lot better in here than it did last time we were here.
Turn off just now, we can hear each other.
We met as a parks committee this week. We, our major item on the agenda is, was the installation of a disc golf course here in this grassy area behind us. And we have a resident that's actually a member of the professional disc golf association and has some connections that was able to get us some baskets that are at a significantly reduced rate. They were baskets that were used when they had the, the national championship here in Ogden a few years back. And so we were able to get those and get them. He's going to help us with installation on that. And he looked over our course and kind of approved our course. And so he's going to work with Austin on our public works team to start the installation of that disc golf course out here. And it, we were able to make it all work within the sponsorship dollars that Austin has collected for this effort. And so it'll be a nice addition out here. Angie's all.
He's going to shoot the city council out of.
Oh, no, we still have to donate. We still, you still have to give your money, but. But we, he, this gentleman also had some really good recommendations as to notifying the neighbors that we're here about, you know, potential changes to noise or where the, a frisbee, the potential for a frisbee in the backyard. But hopefully we've mitigated a lot of that with the design, pulling some of those off of the fence and giving them a little bit more. And changing the angle of them so they're not directly angled at backyards. So she's drafting up a letter that we'll send to kind of all the neighbors around here to let them know that that's upcoming. And if they have any concerns, they can reach out to us. We would also, it, it looks like it's going to be installed and up and running before trunk or treat. And I, I would love to use that as an opportunity to use some big scissors and ribbon again. So.
Can we put pumpkins on, on top of each of them?
Treats in the baskets.
Hey. Fishing club is starting this Saturday and it's completely full. So again, great work on that. I think it's such a cool program. We applied for some funding to do what's called a tail trail around the Smith Family Park pond. And we were unfortunately, didn't denied our funding request through this foundation. But something we'd like to kind of look a little, look into more. But basically what it is, is these installations of these cases that are about this big, by this big, that are permanently installed along the walkway that you can slip blown up children's books in. So two sides of a children's book and they're, they're rotatable. And so as you're walking around the path around the pond, there's 17 different stations that you can stop and read a children's book. And they're interchangeable, so, you know, different seasons, we can change out the books. There's, they recommend 17 of them because most children's books are 34 pages. And, yeah.
One book progressively.
Yep, and as you walk around, you get one, you know, two pages and then another two pages as you go around the pond.
Where you hurry to the next one to see what happens next.
Yeah, and so encouraging like people getting, kids getting active and literacy. And so we're going to continue to kind of look for funding to implement that program.
What does it cost?
I think it was about, was about $14,000 because they're, you know, nice metal cases that are, you know.
Made of wood.
Mm-hmm, they're like museum grade.
That'd be a great place with that trail around there.
Oh, yeah, I didn't think about that. That may be a good, better location, because that kind of needs something. We have that exercise path around.
Yeah, I was thinking that that might be better.
It'd be fun around there.
Actually, I'd like that idea better. So we're going to still explore options to get funding for that. And we would just, we could print the stories in-house on our plotter printer. And so all it would take was just to go out and switch them out, you know, every so often. And there's plenty of books that are on the public domain that don't cost anything for us to just print them and place them there. Like, like, I was also at the WFRC meeting yesterday. My biggest takeaway was that we need to be the ones telling our story to our legislators. That we need to be, because in a vacuum, they will tell our story for us. And so I would like us to see, you know, as a board to maybe do something pre legislative session to, whether it's a report or to invite our representatives to a city council meeting, just so they know the work that we're doing to implement the mandates from them.
So we could invite both Matt and Carl Musselman.
That would be a good idea. That should happen anyway.
Yes.
Yeah, and I mean even, yeah, just to, to things that the city does, so they can see, you know, we're active and that we are, we are trying and we're doing our best to, you know, help with, you know, what they think these, yeah, whatever these issues are, they think that, that are commonplace here.
We don't think we're doing any.
So on the 10th, we have an active transportation committee meeting at 6:00 PM here at the city offices. I'd invite anybody that would want to be involved to come and join us. And then I met with Angie again on our, on some community engagement things. This building blocks was one, so thanks for your support on that. But we're also working on doing potentially a new resident welcome kit that kind of has like an FAQ document in it with some like city branded swag items. And then looking towards maybe doing a, a spring community cleanup where we get some dumpsters out. So we will, she's great, she's so on the block, on the, on top of it. And it's great to have her resources, so.
Katie, when you do that, would you consider any? When you do that, would you consider any ways to involve this youth city council group? The more we can draw them in meaningfully into city activities, the richer this experience will be for them. Right now, they're still just kind of a little undefined. And so the more things we can do as we do these things. I just whenever any of you are planning anything, is there anything youth city council could do to be involved in this? And bring it back to Jason. If you need to, if I'm if I'm here, bring it to me. Where your connections?
Come to these block parties with us.
That would then they could maybe help forward the idea.
So that's it for me.
Okay. Thank you, Katie. And Tim.
I also enjoyed the meeting we had last night. It is always good to learn firsthand from our neighboring cities what their concerns are, what they're dealing with. And that has been kind of an eye opener sometimes. So I did appreciate that. One thing that I reported on a while back, back in June, we I Bob and I attended the Weber Basin Water Conservancy District's tour. And we learned quite a bit. I was able to talk with Dave up there again today, this morning. I have some. First, I have something for each of the city council members. It's called a municipal manual. I'm going to pass those out. There are some other pamphlets, one with regards to secondary water, do's and don'ts. I'd like to get those out where the citizens can have access to them, maybe Citizen Senior Center and maybe at the front office. I have quite a few of those. There's a bunch of these called local scapes. This is kind of a guide to help homeowners who are doing either remodeling their yard or they bought the house and they're newly the initial landscaping of the yard on how to utilize more water efficient plants, how to centralize the water eating lawn to the center of your yard with the foliage around the outside to protect the water. Anyway, these are some really valuable things I think we need to get out to our citizens. And so I did pick up some of those. One thing I did really like, and I think that we need as a city to start looking at it a little closer is the Oklahoma State University several years back started a program to genetically modify Bermuda grass. Now typically this older people, we know what Bermuda grass is. It's invasive. It grows everywhere. It grows fast. It grows gnarly.
We think it's weeds.
But this new, what they call Tohoma 31, doesn't do that. Number one, the seeds are not fertile. So if you let it grow in the seed and the wind blows it away, they don't germinate. They have to germinate by extension and these little pods as they drop. So you can trim those and that goes away. So there this particular grass has been used for NFL Super Bowl stadiums. It's used a lot in the mid south. This particular grass will use 50% less water. It will take 50 to 60% less maintenance in mowing. It's smooth. It's plush. It's exciting. It's something I think the city could use possibly in some park areas. It's something our developers could use to line some retention basins. It's extremely hardy grass. It survives cold harsh winter. It comes up green in the spring. The only difference is because in our time weather zone here in Utah, our nights get cooler earlier in the year. So by October 1st, this grass starts to turn gray.
And it go dormant.
By the end of October, it will be brown. However, it is such a hardy grass that number one, it doesn't shed. The leaves, if you can, I can pass that down, let you look at it. The leaves are really small compared to regular grass. So they don't blow around all over. They don't get dusty. They don't cause a lot of hay fever. They're even they even play soccer football games on brown. Bermuda grass sod down in Texas and Oklahoma and Arizona and New Mexico. Even as far as north as mid Colorado. So it's it's exciting. It hasn't really been available to purchase in Utah until just recently. There's a company in Tremont called Cher Sheriff?
Chan Sheriff. Yep, they're actually up in Bothwell.
They have acquired the rights to grow this sod and sell it. And they started their farm, a large portion of their farm doing the sod this year. By spring, they'll be able to supply what they think will be a very large amount of sod. Currently, if you wanted to buy it, you'd have to buy it, ship it out of Arizona at about $2.50 a square foot. Come spring, it might be as low as a dollar to a dollar and a quarter a square foot out of Tremont. That is solid. If you do what they call sprigs, they take the the sod after it grows and starts spreading like that. And they will shred it up into fine pieces. And then you take that out, you put a pre emergent weed, pre emergence down. And then you spread all of this out and those little seed pods will then start to grow. And within a few months, you've got a full lawn.
What you can oversee to bluegrass lawn with it or what?
You could. They could. The recommendation is that you till it up. And then you put these sprigs down and water and they will terminate, start to grow. Where was I going? Oh, this could be as little as 25 cents a square foot. So you could do a 30 by 50 foot piece for $400 this way. Takes a little care, but in the end, you're watering it once a week instead of every day. You're mowing it once a week or once every two weeks instead of twice a week. It's as green and as plush as Kentucky blue. But it's a lot easier and a lot less maintenance, a lot less expensive to maintain. I personally, I went up and saw they have a big piece of it up there. Two, actually, two pieces, one that they brought the sod in and one that they planted with the sprigs. It's exciting to see how well that stuff works. You get down in it and you run your hands through it and it's nice and soft and plush and it's ever been as good as bluegrass, in my opinion, with a lot less of the labor and cost. So that's something I'd like to see the city get out to the to the developers, to the citizens, the new homeowners or new home buyers. And let's start using less water. To give you an idea why I'm excited about this, recently in the last month or so, the irrigation water that is supplied to Hooper and West Haven is provided by Hooper Irrigation and Wilson Irrigation. They were notified by Hooper Irrigation that they're no longer going to supply water to the system. So the residents of West Haven now are straining the system so much so that they're having a difficult time providing enough water for those people that irrigate their yards. And as more homes get put in, the more strain that's going to be put on the system. If we can reduce our water consumption and get the same kind of landscapes that we're used to enjoying in the cities that we have, we can cover that. It'll make a difference. So that's the reason I'm excited. I went to and talked with those people. They're willing to to see our parks people, any other planning commission, city council members. I can call Dave up and say, we want to bring a guy up and let him look over, you know, and and get ideas of how this will work in our city. And they'll spend the time with us, no charge. As a matter of fact, in the coming spring, they'll be looking at some partial incentives to pay for some of this material to go into our cities. So we not only have an opportunity to make a difference, but we have an opportunity to get it for a reduced or no cost.
What are they doing for residential applications? In other words, right now, you're kind of talking about municipalities and then working with larger scale.
That's why.
Projects. How do we get it down to the individual homeowner in an affordable way that doesn't turn your yard into a weed patch again for another year?
That's where Chan Sheriff comes in. That's what they wanted. They've been part of the grass and turf industry for a number of years.
Got sod from them.
And 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 they see it. They recognize that there's a need for it. And they're going to reduce the cost per square foot of sod alone by a dollar from where you can get it anywhere currently. I don't know what the differences is between that and regular bluegrass. But if you pay a little bit extra for it, but you only have to water it, you know, once a week or mow it once a week, you're that much better off anyways. So they're they're going to be doing some significant advertising, I think, in the near future in the spring.
That our secondary water is going to be metered.
Yep.
Soon.
Going to be.
We're going to be charged for that metering.
I wonder if this be interesting. You know how they have their their programs with Weber Basin, like flip the strip and those types of things? Whether they're going to do something like that towards like you don't just, you can just turn your lawn into gravel, I guess, is one way of doing it. Or would this be something for them? Yeah, would that be something maybe they would consider in their programs?
Right now, Weber Basin is considering a program for that next year.
That would be interesting.
Yes.
Some people like greens more than they do rock.
Yeah, I feel like they're doing mesquite and just spray paint it.
So anyway, here's a here's some things we can give to some of our citizens now. Pass it around, talk about it. Call me up. I'll get you connected up with the right people and any any questions you have, we'll get them answered.
This could actually be in this, I'll call it the welcome wagon packet of things, right? New residents and current residents.
Weber Basin's willing to give us more of these if if we get them out. It's a benefit to them as well as anybody else. So and pretty much that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Tim. That's very informative. I like that kind of stuff. And I first of all, I want to say I really appreciate this council and how involved you guys are, willing to go to all this stuff and and learn and you know, everybody wants to make this place a better community. So I appreciate that very much. Okay, as far as my assignments, Wake Hogg isn't until Monday. Charles Foundation, I talk about this a lot. They have more events coming up. I'm not going to go into the meat of all of that right now, but they do have volunteer opportunities if anybody wants to go help them fix trails and whatnot. So just go to their site and look for those opportunities. It's always good to do. We went to the Tim and I have attended the LPC Legislative Policy Committee and they've been talking a lot about you know, how we have to do the monitoring from housing reports. Well, they have MIH 2.0 as they're calling it. It's a good thing, Dave. Because this is where they want to talk about specific strategies. In other words, a list of strategies that if we are, those are our strategies. There will be less reporting and we don't have to prove it's all working because they they're finally understanding that we don't build houses. All we do is, you know, make rules that allow for housing. So that it's going along pretty well so far. There's still a lot of things to work through on all those housing things. Bonavista, the water report, we're seven months into the year, but we have 51% remaining of our allocation at Bonavista. So we're doing good with with the water there. They are, they did, they they do have a test well out in back of the shop there where they're, and they call it the shop well. Potential new resource for water for, you know, Bonavista in general. They're testing it as we are right now. They're doing it at different levels to find the cleanest water because at certain deep levels, it was not not as good as they were hoping, you know, but they'll find the right level, see if it's treatable. We're hoping that it's treatable because the last thing we want to do is, once again, go find another place and drill another well because it's probably going to tap into the same water. We're running out of different types of sources for water, you know. There's only so much down there and it all comes from upstream anyway. We'll get into that. Another thing that's a positive for us, they Bonavista did approve, they're in a local agreement for the CRA. So that's another one down. We've had some recent development meetings. We had, and Kyle was in on these as well. We had a couple of very interesting proposals for west of Legends and the former, I'll call it the Brentwood area, if anybody remembers the Brentwood area. So I have some maps if everybody wants to see them. It's still just the beginnings of they're testing the waters to see what some of them look really good. Some of them don't look really good. So anyway, there's a lot of interest. Obviously, as we were talking about last night, there's a lot of growth that wants to happen. We're kind of in a surge again. So these things will be coming up. As I mentioned, the Bonavista approved the CRA interlocal, so I'm getting onto the CRA stuff. Also, last evening, I attended school district's study session. We were not, we were dropped from the agenda for later in the meeting. That's why I was able to make it to that other meeting. But we will be on the October 1st agenda for them to consider the interlocal there. I haven't received a formal reply on the agreement from the developer after our CRA meeting, but things still seem to be in motion. And that's about as much as I can say about that. There's still motion, motion and meetings happening. So that's as much as I can say about that right now. I think everybody remembers last Wednesday, it rained a lot, really fast, and we had water in the streets. And just for everybody understands, our stormwater systems were operating as designed. They are designed for a hundred year event. Depending on if you look at the chart, there's a chart out there that you could look at. Depending on how much rain you get in a certain amount of period, they determine what type of rain event that it was. And we were told that we got about 2.38 inches. I don't know where they measured that, but I'm I'm wondering could because North Ogden and Harrisville got four inches, you know, were we part of that ribbon that actually hit those areas within a few hours? Because you can have a hundred year event in 24 hours. The same amount of rain in 12 hours is a 200 year event. That same amount of rain in a few hours is a 500 year event. And if you get it really in a short time, which I think some of this was, it could be a thousand year event. But for what it's worth, and I know everybody has been giving me grief about being on TV with.
Oh, sweet. I loved it.
Why? Because when he asked me what's causing this and I said, the rain? You know, I I I didn't even think about it. That was the obvious answer. But yeah, so there's a lot of this going on. But as we were standing there talking about all the water, there were kids with kayaks and there were dogs playing in the water. But as we were there, you could almost see it receding. You could see it backing off of things. And when we, because we actually closed a road into an intersection where it was fairly deep. I went back to look at it later and it was dry. So we start, we pulled those things down and news guys were still there and I'm like, what are you even looking at? It's over. And so that didn't get on the news. So.
What they do with Ruben White, that thing turns into a.
I I drove through that as well. I drove through every street in the city. I I drove through every street in the city and we were in pretty good shape. We had, actually, we had water in detention ponds that have not had water in them in years. And even the one at Peterson's, you know, that beautiful park was full of water. So even the one out here that I don't think it's ever had water in it, had water in it. So we had water, but it did dissipate appropriately. You know, according to the designed engineering of things, there may be some things we need to look about, look at as far as working with Plain City, for instance, and things downstream, because no matter what, our systems can be as good as they are, but they still have to flow somewhere. Because no matter what, our systems can be as good as they are, but they still have to flow somewhere. And as a matter of fact, um, two weeks ago, we had an area on twenty-five hundred where we had some flooding in the road. And that was actually from irrigation water, you know, because it hadn't rained, but we had water all over the place and it was just how the gates were going and how things weren't flowing and all that. During this whole event, that was, except for while it was raining, was dry. It did not fill up with water. So um, we're confident that our systems are working as designed.
Also a good reminder that stormwater goes in the storm drain system and nothing else. Not the debris from your, from your driveway, not.
That's right.
What you've swept off the sidewalk, what you, like, we need to make sure that, that we are not adding extra debris or
Right.
sediment to the storm drain system because.
So every, like lawn clippings and all that kind of stuff, if they get into the gutters and they get in the stormwater system, if there is things in the stormwater system, it could catch any of that. That is going to inhibit things for a minute, you know. So yeah, just keep things flowing, make sure you understand that. But I, I'm pretty, I'm proud of our uh, public works guys. There's still some things to look into, I've got plenty of calls about it. Uh, but it did dissipate and of course, Lindsey will attest and of course, everybody, the, the phones were ringing off the hooks. Everybody wanted to let us know that it was raining.
The barometer called.
Yes, it did. So um, I do not have anything more as far as reports, but we do have one last item on the agenda.
I moved re agenda.
Second.
Tim and Boyd are motion in second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, say an aye. Thank you all, appreciate you.